It's seven thirty, Mr. Chairman, we can start whenever you'd like.
With the call the order to the Township of Ocean Planning Board Regular Meeting, May twenty four, twenty twenty one. Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Defilia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Dr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Good? This is Close?
Here.
Mr. Ciano?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein? Chairman de Benedetto?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
To the Republic.
Republic. Which is stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of requirements, an open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent, having been sent to the Esbury Park Press and the Coaster and filed in Ocean Township Clerk on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Board policy, no new cases be started after ten thirty P M. And no new testimony taken after eleven P M. Resolution more memorializations. Allison McGuffin. Block five point zero two lots twenty one and twenty two, four forty three West Park Avenue, Oakhurst Minor Subdivision Approval. Can I have a motion to approve?
This is Ed, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Chairman de Benedetto?
Yes, can we let the record show that Mr. Weinstein has joined the meeting?
Yeah.
Thanks Chairman.
Thank you. Case carried to June twenty eight, twenty twenty one Roosevelt Avenue Properties LLC Block twenty two lots eleven, twelve and twenty two Roosevelt Avenue Ocean. Sandy, there's no new notice for that, right?
That should be correct, let's just verify it with Mr. Kirk.
No new notice.
Very good, thank you.
All right, and today's first case is eighteen oh three eighteen oh seven Holbrook LLC Blocks thirty three twenty dot twenty nine lots two and three. Eighteen oh three dash eighteen oh seven Holbrook Street Oakhurst R dash four, this applications for minor subdivision create three lots. One hundred by hundred, two ninety five by hundred and three one oh five by a hundred. Attorney for the applicant is Mr. Christopher Beekman. As I said before, Mr. Beekman, we usually, I think your application is pretty straightforward. So we've let our professionals read the reports and then you can add in if you like, and then we can have a little discussion.
That's certainly fine, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Jim?
Okay, just in introduction, this may seem like deja vu to the board because you just approved a resolution for a very similar type of subdivision where they're taking two lots with houses on them, taking area out of each of the lots between the houses and creating a third lot. So the applicants proposing to subdivide to two lots into three lots, two of which will contain existing residences and one of which will be a vacant building lot. The subject tract consists of two lots, each of which is occupied by a single family residence. Lot two is a fourteen thousand square foot lot with a hundred and forty feet of frontage on Holbrook and a depth of a hundred feet. It's occupied by one story ranch style, single family residence that is located on the north end of the lot. Lot three is a sixteen thousand square foot lot with a hundred and sixty feet of frontage on Holbrook and a depth of a hundred feet. It's occupied by a one story ranch style, single family residence that's located on the southern end of the lot. The residences are a hundred and twenty three feet apart. The application proposes to subdivide off portions of each of the each lot to create a one hundred by one hundred fully conforming lot between the two residences for the purpose of constructing a single family residence on the new lot. The new lot will be fully conforming in all respects. There are several variances that are necessary for the lots that will contain the existing dwelling. Lot two point oh one will be ninety five hundred square feet rather than ten thousand square feet that's required. And both lots will require variances for lot for building coverage. And I really don't have a major problem with the variances that are being requested. The ninety five hundred square foot lot, first of all, the frontage still exceeds the minimum required by the ordinance. Ninety feet required and the frontage will be ninety five feet. When you're looking at it, you won't be able to tell it's an undersized lot. With regard to the coverage, the whole intent of limiting coverage is to try and control visual impact. In this instance, both lots have ranches that are very unlikely to be increased in height. If they were to be increased in height, they would have to come back to the zoning board for approval. But the visual impact was not as great as if these were two story dwellings. Then you would have much more visual impact, so in terms of scale, I think it makes sense. The ordinance does require seven point five street trees, which would round up to eight. And there are three provided on new lot two point oh two, there's no street trees on either of the other two lots. And if the board determines a street tree should be provided, I'd recommend putting two street trees on each of those lots. And that's it.
And Mr. Chairman, I also have a report, but it's, I have no problem with it. It's all for the most part, planning issues, which Jim just discussed with engineering wise, I have no issue.
Alright, so no drainage issues or anything like that?
No, because at the time of construction, they'll have to get a plot plan reviewed and approved by the Township Engineers Office.
Okay, got it.
It's not a major development or anything like that, it's.
Anybody from the board? Anybody from the board have any questions for Jim or Bill?
So no plans at this time to build anything on that lot right now?
No definitive plan, Dave, you know, if they, if when they build, if it's approved, if when they build, they would have to file a plot plan application, there's a checklist for that. And it goes through the Building Department, the Town Engineers Office and back. Um, I mean, you're certainly allowed to build as soon as they satisfy any requirements of the board if there's an approval, but it's just a generic subdivision at this point.
No questions, that's it.
I, I, I agree with Jim, if, if we do approve, I would like to see the street trees planted on the other lots. Anyone else have any discussion?
And Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we ask if there's any members of the public who want to ask questions of.
I was gonna, I was gonna let Mr. Beekman speak. If you'd like to first, and then we could ask the public to see if they have any questions. Is that okay, or you want to continue with public first?
No, no, that's fine, I, I thought it'd be helpful to see if there is anybody objecting from the public before Mr. Beekman starts, but that's fine. I would ask Mr. Beekman if he would stipulate to the planting of the trees.
I don't see any issue with that, my client is also on it, Mr. Irving can also just confirm.
Right, if he.
That'd be there.
I think you can just ask him, otherwise we'd have to have him sworn in.
I think he said, yeah, yeah, he's fine with it, he's fine with it.
And if, if there are no members of the public who have any objections, do you want to adjust? Yes.
Yes, I think we're good with that, thank you, Mr. Brown. I do have Mr. Sermont and my client on, but I think that if there's no objection from the public, I think that Mr. Higgins' testimony said more than enough with regards to what the current application is, so thank you.
So I'm gonna ask again, is anyone from the public have any comments or questions about this application? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and I will ask, is anyone like to make a motion for or against this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
We have a second?
I'll second.
And we are approving, Mr. Weinstein, we're approving with the street trees, correct?
Right, right, with the stipulation that the street trees be added.
Okay.
On building, right.
Amy, can we go to the roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman de Benedetto?
Yes.
Congratulations, have a good night.
Thank you, everyone, we appreciate your time this evening, good seeing everyone, take care, Mr. Brown, thank you, everyone.
Alright, our next application, Roller Road LLC Block one eighty two, Lot two fourteen fourteen, South Roller Road Ocean. I guess that's, what's that, I dash one?
One. Mr. Chairman, R one.
It's one.
No, it's I one.
It's I one.
I one.
Light industrial zone.
I'm reading.
Just wanted to clarify, so it's an I one. This is an application to place a generator in a side yard setback. Attorney for the applicant is Mr. Jeffrey A. Donner. Mr. Donner?
Yes, sir.
How are you tonight?
I'm doing very well, thank you for asking.
Wonderful, do you, do you mind if we continue the same path that we let the professionals speak?
Not at all, sir.
Alright, Mr. Higgins?
Surely, just, just to correct the agenda, it says side yard setback, but it's actually in a front yard. The, it's thirty five point one feet setback in the front yard where fifty feet is required. There's a generator being proposed. I don't have a problem with the location of the generator where it is, it doesn't seem to be a lot of other room on the site to put it there. It is adjacent to a transformer, but it's also in the front yard, it doesn't appear that that transformer had ever gotten approvals to be in the front yard. So I think, and Sandy, maybe you can clarify for me with the wording, any and all other variances cover mending the application to include that transformer in the front yard, since it's shown on the plan.
Yeah, you know, usually we don't favor those generic terms, but it's perfect for a situation where a professional on the board, like a planner, suggests that such a variance be granted, I have no problem with that.
Okay, and my only suggestion is that since these structures are in the front yard, I think they should be screened off somehow. Either with landscaping or fencing to just to soften the visual impact of them.
Would you like to have control of that, Mr. Higgins?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Mr. Donner, would you stipulate to that?
I have Mr. Cohen on, and he's the principal of the applicant, I'm sure that's not an issue, Mr. Cohen, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I have no issues with the, with the trees or fence.
Yeah, it would mean, mean just the revised plan being submitted showing landscaping or fencing around those two structures.
Been approved.
Okay.
And the only other issue is noise, and I think Bill can deal with that, a noise report was submitted.
Alright, Bill. So, Mr. Chairman, I have two reports on this one, one from a month ago, where my main concern was noise because there are no yards on this property that are not somewhat exposed to residential properties. So, I, I issued a report in April on, this morning I actually received the document, which is supplementary, it's not something the board is explicitly approving, so it can be walked into the meeting under the land use law, but because I got it this morning, I got out a brief statement early this afternoon to tell you that the report demonstrates clearly, it's done by a competent professional, he's a licensed professional engineer specializing in acoustic work and sound and noise evaluation, and it's a fine report, and it demonstrates that the installation will meet the state and municipal noise emission standards as a, at a receiving residential property. The only caveat I had is that you're pretty much approving, all these mechanical pieces have different noise level emissions, although they're relatively similar, so that I am asking the board to approve unless the applicant has some problems, specifically the equipment noted on the plan, because they did notice specific model and, and the engineer that evaluated the noise and sound emissions referred to that model and that manufacturer. I have no problem with it.
So, go ahead, I, what's the generator being used for? What's the use for it? Mr. Donner?
It's an emergency generator, it's only going to be used in the event of a power outage. I would note, though, that the reason we went into the noise analysis is that at least one time a year for approximately a half hour, the generator needs to be tested. So what the report shows, as I think Mr. Fitzgerald indicated, is that during those testing times, we are well within the decibel regulated range. There is no regulation, believe it or not, when an emergency generator is used for emergency purposes. But I think our report would extend to those times as well, so we are not creating a noise hazard in this area.
And, I'm sorry, let me just, Bill, what we're, we're asking them to do fencing with it, or some type of landscape, that would help with the noise too, correct?
If it's set up properly, as I understand it, because I just happen to have an applicant doing identical right now. Oh, we have set the type of fencing specifically completely close faced and a minimum of a foot above the structure. And that was because noise needed to be mitigated, and this one, these this structure, or this, I would call it a structure, this mechanical equipment can stand alone and not violate noise emission standards. So that the, the screening and fencing can be pretty much as Jim wants it. For example, if he wanted a picket fence, or it doesn't have to be a solid face fence, a foot above the top of the mechanical equipment, because noise is not the issue. I think Jim is worried more about aesthetics in a front yard than the noise issue.
I just, it's just, it's just my thought that if you're gonna ask them to do something, that we would just do it as best as possible, like, you know, if it just to mitigate any noise, but anyway, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, then it should be a fence, because the vegetation won't mitigate the noise.
Okay.
And it should be a completely solid face fence, so like, it could be a board and batten fence, but it can't be like a board on board or a picket type fence.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know the point here, I'm not sure that it's being recognized. I don't believe we have a problem with the fencing anywhere the board wants it, but the generator will be within an acoustical shell. So it's not a piece of equipment that's exposed to the environment directly, it is already within an acoustical shell. So that's why I thought that Mr. Higgins was talking about visual screening. The, I, I believe that we're getting full benefit of the acoustical shell, and we're well within the regulated decibel ranges.
Anyone else from the board would like to?
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to ask a question, so when you, when you say it's going to be used for emergency purposes, and it's well within the decibel ranges, if it turns out that it has to be used for a week, right? Is that where we start running into where people around you, people around this are gonna start feeling like there's this bad white noise in the background, or what is, what's gonna be the, the essence of that? Bill, do you have, do you have a comment about that?
Yeah, Jeff, I, okay, so I looked at a couple of things, I mean, their engineer did a really nice job. Having said that, we looked at a couple of things, but number one, the state noise standard does exempt, even though it makes it, exempt them under emergency conditions. What I was looking for is what happens if, say, they're, the owner of the building is having electrical work done, and for whatever reason, that generator needs to be run, and it's not like a power outage that JCP and L has area wide, or something that you would normally consider an emergency, suppose it was elective. And the, the indication from the analysis is that it will still meet noise standards.
Yes.
So, um, I don't know, people may feel like.
What I guess what I mean is, does noise standards mean that nobody hears it within that residency?
It means it's just not. It's relatively low, so if you or I were sitting in a room across the table, having this conversation in person, the noise level would be approximately fifty five, fifty six decibels, approximately. Okay, and what the state requires at a residential property between ten at night or after ten at night, and I believe it's seven or eight in the morning, is fifty decibels or less, so it's actually more quiet at the receiving residential property line than say, standing next to you and I having this conversation in person. Doesn't mean you don't hear it at all, it means it's very low.
Our, our property also is only operated from nine to five, there are no nighttime hours strictly nine to five. So we actually make, we're within the decibel ranges that are permitted for daytime hour use.
No, you're well, you're well within, and that's not, that's not an issue. You did a good job, your analysis is good.
And the nearest house is two hundred and thirty five feet, is that what you said?
You want to stipulate on the record and therefore in the resolution to time of operation?
I, I believe we could stipulate that, because I've spoken about that with Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen, is that a good stipulation that the, the hours of the tenant in the building are between nine A M. and five P M.?
It's typically, I would say anywhere between eight and six, that's okay, but that's typically, that's, you know, again, usually it is sometimes nine to five, but where it really eight to six sometimes, so that's okay, eight to six is a, this one.
Mr. Chairman, that certainly seems to be a more than reasonable timeframe.
Yeah, I, I, again, I would be looking for the, you're, you're okay with the fencing? Mr. Donner, you're okay with that?
Has approved that, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I would, I would like to do the fencing, just to, you know, if there is a, a longer duration of generation use, you know, it would mitigate some of the noise, that's all. I just think it's a smart thing to do in this particular, especially where that building is situated, and it being on the roller road side of the street, if it was on the other side of the street, I think it would be less of an issue, but because it's on that roller road and it's closer to those residential areas, I think we need to do the best thing.
And just so. And to answer Mr. Weinstein's question about the distance, that nearest house is probably a little bit more than two hundred and thirty feet away. And it's at the bottom of a very steep slope, so it's not like it's level with the subject site. If you get on the opposite side, on the west side of Roller Road, there's a steep slope that runs down to that residential subdivision. So the roof of that house is actually level with about the top of the slope.
And are there any available lots to be built on that are, that are closer?
No.
No.
Close one.
No, it's totally developed, and the exposure is to the residences to the left. Just to be clear, from what Jim is saying, from a practical point of view, the, the actual effect be something less than the evaluation. The evaluation dealt with the standard which says at a residential property line, not at a residence.
But to Mr. Donner's point, the intent is that this is used how often?
For emergency circumstances when the power is out, and testing approximately one time a year for about a half hour.
And do you know how many?
Testing, I think the board should also condition and approval on testing being scheduled, you know, within normal daytime hours, eight, eight to five.
And that would be stipulated.
Do you know how many times in the past year or two you would have needed this emergency facility?
Uh, I don't, but Mr. Cohen certainly does, and he's here.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Jeff, I've been in the building, I think, since two thousand sixteen seventeen in that range.
Yeah, he has to be sworn in, hold on.
Raise your right hand, please, to promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be good.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I was gonna say, since I've been in the building since, I think, two thousand sixteen seventeen, I'm not sure exactly when, what month, but since we've been in the building, we've probably had anywhere between twenty five and thirty outages. It could be, it could be anywhere lasting from whether it's a few hours to a week to two weeks. We've made, the only, the only reason why I'm doing the generator is because we've had so many issues, whether it's township, you know, whether it's based on the area, the location, for whatever reason, whether with the storm, we've had so many issues and I'm out. This is the last thing I would want to do, is spend this type of amount of money to keep this, this generator going, but this is, we're having so many issues that I don't know if I can last with these interruptions, you know?
So just to quantify it, though, Mr. Cohen, you talked about approximately twenty interruptions, that's over a period of five years, so you're talking approximately.
I would say probably in the last four or five, in the last four, last four to five years, we probably had close to probably maybe thirty. Again, it could be two hours, it could be two days, it could be one week, we've had two and a half weeks, just very hard to operate like this.
I don't, I don't think anybody has a problem with you having a generator for your business, I think that that's inappropriate use. I just think we're just concerned about the noise, and I think you understand where we're coming from. And I think, you know, I think if we do the, the right thing here, I think we have a good deal.
The only thing I was gonna mention.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, the only thing I was gonna mention is, I think aesthetically, I think it will look better, I mean, again, to put maybe trees around as opposed to a fence, because right now, if you look at the building, it may not look right with a fence.
I think what we'll probably do is ask you, we'll ask you for the solid fence at the height that it should be, and then if you want to finish the outside of it consistent with the building, or put some screening that Jim approves outside of it to soften the look of the fence, that will be fine, but as, as you heard, and it's true, the landscaping isn't going to do much to, to take care of any concern regarding noise or sound.
Yeah, that brings up the issue I wanted to clarify, because I initially heard Jim talking about a fence and plantings. So it seems that.
Yeah, I would be comfortable with the wording being fence and or plant, fence, yeah, and or plantings, but.
Yeah.
The board definitely wants a fence, so.
Yeah, fence.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not okay with the planting or, or planting, I would be fencing, period, if the applicant wants to put plantings, that's up to him after he puts the fencing in.
Okay.
You have to stipulate any kind of fence so that it is a deterrent for.
It's got, okay, Jeff, it's got to be solid face, so what I will do is I have a detail that we just worked up, as again, for one of my clients. I'll forward that to the applicant's engineer, and it's not saying he has to use that, but it'll give him an idea of what we'd be looking for, and as long as it's solid face and goes higher than, excuse me, goes higher than the, the equipment by a foot, it'll be fine.
Yeah, it'll be subject to final approval by, we were originally talking about Jim, but we should probably make it Jim and Bill.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna say that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, I just want to say, I don't know anything about the generators, but I, you know, when, if it, if there's that moment in time where it starts really cranking out loud, you know, when you say that you had to use it for a week at a time, and if you're starting to push the issue, I would be concerned about that.
Jeff, I, I think the balancing there is, is it better to have a resident be a little bit in a little bit of discomfort, or is it better to lose a business?
Well, more importantly, is it better to meet the standard? If, if, if for some reason, Jeff, as you say, the thing becomes loud, meaning changed perceived volume, and it exceeds a noise standard, it's against the law, it's a different, so there are agencies that, that an aggrieved resident could call, county agency, if I remember right, could be the health department, I'm just not sure, that can come and actually take the, take a measurement. Okay, and, and, but if it meets the standard, and it just happens to be annoying someone, I'm not sure how you deal with that.
And, and the other thing is, given the topography, I don't even think the people in the residences are gonna hear it at all.
Okay.
Plus, I'd like the board to perhaps take notice of the fact that this is not the only generator in the area, including residences that
Right.
use considerably louder temporary generators in similar circumstances that don't seek or need approval from this board. So this, if, if the power goes out, this is not the only generator that's gonna be working in this neighborhood.
That's correct.
Guarantee that.
That's correct.
Except these are the only ones that we can hear about, right? We, we, we can't.
Well, yeah, yeah, you're gonna be hearing about more.
No, but what I was saying is, we can't, we don't, we really can't preside over what people do in houses, right? We can only preside over this, so.
Well.
But, but Mr. Weissman, I, I think the point also that Mr. Fitzgerald made, is that if we do meet and stay within the decibel standards, neighbors should not be disturbed, and if it gets to a point where they are disturbed, then there's remedies. And we have no reason to anticipate that this brand new equipment is going to go out of sync, especially if it's maintained properly and tested once a year.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board have any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, so what kind of businesses is in this facility at this time?
We sell health and beauty, it's we're a distributor.
Okay, it's not a manufacturing facility, you're not lines of manufacturing going by, where, you know?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, I think the fact that the land is situated down almost a little bit of a picture of valley down there, it's gotta be a good thing, right, Jim? I assume? picture of valley down there's gotta be a good thing, right, Jim? I assume?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely, Dave.
Yeah, all right. Some more questions?
Anyone else? Anyone from the public?
Before, I just wanna say more. I'd be, I'd be more just to, just as a safety net. If it, if it went from eight to, eight to five instead of eight to six, I mean, I know I'm being a little bit picky on this, but, uh, I like to make sure at least it didn't start going, that the noise, if it did start going for a week or two at a time, it did start going louder.
Jeff, just, just so you know, if the power goes out in the middle of the night, the generator's going on. You understand that, right?
Yeah, I, I don't believe that's the.
I don't know if that's the case. Is that the case?
Mr. Cohen, is that, is that the case? The power goes out in the middle of the night, wouldn't it start up?
The power goes out at night, we are not there. I, I don't, I don't believe it will kick in. No, it's only if we're there. I believe it's only if we're there.
Okay, what about, I'm, I'm sorry, I've gotta interject here for a moment. What about heating and air conditioning of your facility? I mean.
I absolutely disagree. Uh, the generator will come on when the power goes off. That's what the generator does.
Correct, but just not everything in our building is gonna be on the generator. So right now, we don't have a generator that could operate the whole entire building, so it's really for our lights, our computers, our cardboard. We have a compactor. This is for emergency use, if our business, if we need lights, and our computers, and our, and our server, and our camera system. This is not for, I don't even think the heating and air conditioning go on the unit. And even if it did go on the unit, that's something that's, that's, that's being run throughout the day right now. How would that affect, you know?
No, I was just saying, between the hours of eight to eight and five, eight and six, this would be at.
Yeah, but my heating and, my heating and my air conditioning's working now throughout that, throughout the days.
Right, but I'm saying that the, the chairman made an excellent point, which is at two o'clock in the morning, you lose power. Okay, this generator's gonna kick on to run your heating, air conditioning, lights, and computers.
Okay.
So then the whole eight to six thing is not relevant, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's relevant, Jeff, really, because how can you stipulate to eight to six when it's a generator for power failure?
I thought, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
This is industrial park. It's an industrial park, and up to ten o'clock at night, every operation in there can, can have a sound emission up to sixty-five decibels.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I've just, why are we holding him to eight to six is what I'm trying to say.
I don't know.
Wait, wait.
It's unrealistic.
Wait, wait, ladies and gentlemen, my, my understanding, and please let me know if I'm, you know, if, for clarification purposes, my understanding that eight to six would be the hours for them to do the maintenance the running of the generator, so that, because I'm like, I have a generator, it has to run once a week. I run it at four o'clock in the afternoon. Okay, I believe eight to six is what the, they're trying to say would be the hours in which they would perform that maintenance operation only. The rest is, and as, as a generator, and Mr. Donner, please tell me if I'm wrong. No, you, you didn't. That's not what he said. He said that if there was, once a year, they would do the test, once a year, they would do testing in the normal business hours. The other part was basically the running of the operation would be from eight to six. I think, you know, I, that's, that's what was said.
I want you all to be clear, though, because I mean, I, I, I agree with the chair that at two o'clock in the morning, if they, if, you know, uh, uh, they lose power, this generator is gonna kick on.
But, uh, members of the board, I, I think if, if we're at the close of the testimony, we can, uh, offer a resolution with, uh, facts and, uh, vote accordingly. I, I, and I'm not sure if we clearly asked the question, if there are any members of the public who have any questions or comments. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I just wanna make sure, uh, Mr. Weinstein's clear on what we were discussing, so, you know, you, um, just, I, I wanna make sure you're comfortable with.
I was just, I was piggybacking off what they were saying, which was that they were gonna have it run from eight to six. You brought up a great point, that they really can't control that.
Right.
Um, and so if that's the case, and, uh, then we should, then we should live with that, and, um, and just, uh, believe that it, that it meets the standards for the right noise level.
Right.
So then if it doesn't, then so, if it doesn't.
Saying that it meets.
That, right.
All right, anyone from the public? Have any comments? So I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have Barbara Allen, who's our planner, that I need to give at least minimal testimony on the variances being sought. The front yard setback variance from Rose Avenue.
You think you really need that, Mr. Donner?
Uh, as long, if, will the board stipulate to, uh, this be a hardship?
Yeah, I, I think we're good, Mr. Donner. I don't think we, you know, I, it's really, the only issue, um, I, I believe is the fencing, um, just for, you know, in the event that the noise becomes an issue, uh, to mitigate that. I think that's really pretty much it, uh, unless I'm hearing something else from, from the board, which I do believe that's not the case.
Uh, we can ask Jim. Jimmy, you had no, uh, problems with the, the variance, right? You felt that?
No, no, I think it's the only place on the site.
Right, so.
I agree.
Yeah, positive and negative criteria under the flexible C standards, right?
Yes, absolutely. And there's no substantial negative impact, as long as we put the conditions on the board's talking about.
Peter, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I agree with what you're saying, Chairman.
Okay, uh, can I get a, uh, so we can close the hearing now?
Yes.
All right, can I get a positive or negative resolution with the fencing, plus all the variances that meets, uh, Jim and, uh, Bill's, uh, recommendation for this property?
I'll make a recommendation. I'll, um, I'll, uh, move to approve it.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy? Amy?
Mr., yes, Mr. Defilia.
Sorry, Amy.
That's okay. Mr. Dutty?
Yeah, I would just say yes, and, uh, you know, I think it's a shame that a business owner has to get a generator, because the power doesn't work, so I'll just leave it there.
Touche.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Di- Benedetto?
Yes. Congratulations. Sorry for the, uh.
Jay, Jay, I just didn't want you to know where I was. I just wanted you to know where I was standing at the beginning.
I, I wanna thank the members of the board for their time and attention this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
I can make a motion to adjourn?
Includes the meeting. Uh, we got a motion to adjourn. I have a second. My second.
All favor, all favor. Hi, hi, hi.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Next month.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. See ya.